This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month. Any recommendations made on rezone requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and planning commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with shape Sioux Falls 2035 comprehensive plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. Once the consent agenda has been approved, those agenda items have been approved and members of the public are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward, make a statement, or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anybody addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. And as a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we go through the consent agenda items, I would like to recognize Councilman Jamison and thank him for joining us tonight. Thank you. Okay, the first item of business is the consent agenda. Item number one is approval of the April 7, 2010 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two are Platts. Item three, number 2010-03-14 is a rezone from C2 Commercial District to the C3 Central Business District for allowed uses at 500 South Main Avenue. Item number four, number 2010-04-03 is a rezone from the O Office District and the C4 Plan Commercial District to the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at 4801 West 41st Street. Item number five, number 2010-04-07 is a rezone from the O Office District to the RS2 Residential District for allowed uses at the northeast corner of East 10th Street and 6 Mile Road. Item number six, number 2010-04-02 is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District to erect a 194-foot monopole communication tower at the southeast corner of the subject property at West 69th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue. Item number seven, number 2010-04-11 is a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at 2309 West Madison Street. And finally, item number eight, number 2010-04-10 is a final development plan in Subarea B of Whisper Ridge Plan Development District to construct four-unit residential buildings at Southeastern Avenue and Tranquility Place. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, commission action?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Darla, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. If you were here for an item on the consent agenda, you're free to leave. Okay, the next item, and this is the regular agenda, item nine, staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, members of the audience.
Name is Steve Randall. With the planning staff, I'll be representing this item this evening as well as others. The applicant for this petition is Jason Walz of Sandtrap Incorporated, and the owner is represented by Platinum Valley Holdings, too. This is a request for a major amendment to allow an on-sale alcohol establishment at the proposed location, given by address and legal description. It is currently a multi-tenant commercial building, one of two, to be constructed in this area. It's a developed area with residential units also being constructed to the west. The adjoining land uses are indicated in your report and on the vicinity map as shown on the screen. We give compatibility ratings to the proposed application with relationship to adjacent properties. To the north and south, we give a rating of five, which means that it is compatible with future development as well as existing. To the east, it's still zoned agricultural. We don't have a plan for land uses in that area, so we have not given it a rating in that direction. However, to the west, we have a compatibility rating of three. And to explain that a little bit further, the proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing adjacent uses, which may be remedied or minimized through project design. Traffic parking and other external effects should be directed away from the lower intensity uses. Landscaping, buffering, and screening should be employed to minimize negative effects. The applicant is representing that this condition is being met with their existing conditions there. Similar to a project in a similar situation on Marion Road, the applicant also has a place of business there in a similar type of building and relationship with residential development. Platinum Valley PD Subarea B was initially zoned and planned for office uses. However, on October 3, 2005, a major amendment to the subarea was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council to allow retail trade and services on Lot 2, Block 21. On November 2, 2005, a final development plan in Subarea B was approved to allow construction of two neighborhood retail centers, one of which has been constructed for the subject property. There were conditions for approval on that, that freestanding signs be constructed as presented. Building signage is not allowed on the west elevation of the west half of the north and south elevation. Site lighting is provided as sites adjacent to residentially used and zoned and used property, and the trash enclosure was to be constructed of brick. On March 11, 2010, a major amendment to Subarea B was approved to add off-sale alcohol as an allowed use on Lot 4, Block 21. The subarea regulations are indicated in your staff report, and the request is noted as item D under uses permitted. On-sale alcohol will be allowed at 6811 South Louise Avenue on Lot 4, Block 21, Platinum Valley Edition. That is the request before you this evening. Describing the site, the existing corridor development pattern according to the comprehensive plan is limited access arterial. We do have full access to shared parking off the main street. There is also a shared access to Whitsky Avenue on the west side of this project, and that is a private drive. There is no design review district involved, and there's no proximity to parks, open space, or schools to be considered. Parking is provided on both sides of the building as indicated on the site plan. The majority of the parking is facing away from the residential uses, and the applicant has been advised that it would be wise to provide the parking for the establishment away from those residential uses. Existing conditions are expected to remain the same for landscaping, lighting, and signage. Landscaping plan is presented as shown on the screen. Fire department has noted that the building will require full sprinkler system fire alarms for assembly use with an occupant load greater than 100, and that will apply. As far as special information goes, we have been contacted by one individual representing the neighborhood to the west, and I believe they are present this evening to comment on a neighborhood meeting that was held last night. The petitioner is here to comment as well. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed project because on-sale alcohol is typically found where retail trade and services are allowed, and we would like to put a couple of conditions on that. Those conditions would be included in other regulations. First one being no public entrance to an on-sale alcohol establishment from the west side of the building. The second one, no signage visible on the west side or ends of the building. That can be included in the other regulations of the subarea regulations, or it can be applied at such time as the applicant comes forward for their licensing. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Steve, under special information, the second paragraph, there may be, if you want to read that for the folks.
Okay, because the proposed use is next to a residential neighborhood, and if there is concern about being able to disallow the use in the future for cause, this major amendment would have to add, under other regulations, the requirement that on-sale alcohol is allowed in the subarea only by special use permit.
So is that saying that that's something we can recommend or make one of the also one of the conditions?
That's correct. In the past, we have allowed on-sale alcohol as well as off-sale alcohol in a subarea of a planned development district, using the other regulations to control the development of that use, and that's been sufficient to provide the compatibility that we're after. If, however, you feel that there could be possibly a controversy or a situation in the future that would warrant disallowing the use, you would have to include the provision that they have to obtain a special use permit. The special use permit could be revoked in the future.
Steve, I visited earlier with you about that driveway going into the residential neighborhood. I think that was probably done certainly before my time, but you probably remember how it came about. We don't typically see a driveway like that from properties of a commercial nature exiting into a residential neighborhood. And I think if I have a concern, it's the concern of what sort of traffic is that going to get late in the evening and such, and it'll be interesting to see if there's any neighbors here with some concerns about that. But without that special use permit, if that were to become a problem, and if we don't put that special use permit into it, we really don't have any jurisdiction to do anything about the problem down the road. If, and it might not become a problem, but if it did.
That's correct.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Jason Walz, 911 South Colleen Lane, Sioux Falls.
Jason, do you have anything to add to the staff report?
The conditions that were put forth, I agree to them fully, and I don't have any issues with any of the conditions placed upon the establishment. We do operate bogies out on Marion Road. We've been there for 15 years.
Okay.
Jason, are you typically open till 2:00 in the morning? Is that your game plan?
The plan would be to start to be till 2:00, but depending on business, it could be a midnight thing. Sundays, we typically close at midnight. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
Jason, so there won't be any public access from that west side, from the back side?
No public access, correct.
So hopefully that will minimize any traffic that could possibly use that exiting alleyway?
Out the back, correct. Yeah, I would assume, I would want all my employees and everybody to park out front, too, just so we don't have any conflicts with residential area behind us there.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to address this item?
I'm John Timmer. I live at 7100 South Whitsky Place, which is in the Platinum Valley Townhome Edition just south of 77th Street, which is right across the street from this area. I am here tonight representing the Townhouse Association. I've just given a letter from our president of our association to Stan in which they are appointing myself and Gary Scott of Gary Review Stan and his wife Gloria. And we could have had another 15, 20 people here, but we didn't think we were in a strong enough position to be doing that much at this time. Platinum Valley has 78 homes, and it was developed by Don Dunham, and we can only say great things for the way Don developed that back when he did. We consider it one of the prime townhouse associations in the whole city, and of course, we think we're the best. During the time when we were putting this together and our first president was visiting with Don Dunham, Don Dunham assured him at that time that there would be no liquor in the area north of 77th Street. And two months ago, March 10 through 11, or whenever it was, you rezoned one little building or part of one building to allow for off-sale liquor. And the posting of that at the time was during the snowstorms, and I was just visiting with Stan, and he tells me when the only rezone one little part of a building, you only have to put the notice signs on that part of the building. Our people living across the street, there wasn't a single one ever saw the signs. And of course, I was in Arizona, so I didn't see what the snowstorm was like, but my feeling is very few, if any, people saw those rezoning signs at that time. In fact, even now, with the new signs that were put up, which are put out a little bit farther than what I think the old ones were, none of our people in our development saw them because they're not on the street. And I think that leaves a little bit of a problem. If people see something pink way on inside or whatever color that was, they don't think of it nearly as much as if it's right down close to the street where, when you're driving by, you see it's being rezoned. The new rezoning for beer, wine, and video lottery, as Jason or what Mr. Walz just said, doesn't look like it's going to become a residential bar, staying open till 2:00 AM because most of us go to bed at 8:30. And some are getting up again at 4:00 or 5:00. And it just, to us, doesn't appear that that's quite right. On the rezoning for the off-sale liquor, the lady next door, right next door, right across the alley where the cars are going to drive through for pickup, did not know that there was a rezoning thing for March 11. She runs a ballerina studio, and she was told by Mr. Jim Dunham when she asked that there would be no liquor in that area. In fact, I have a letter from her that I'd like to give to the commission, and Gary will pass those out. I got to keep wanting to read. And I want everybody to have one. This is what she says. "To whom it may concern, I am the owner of Ballerina Dance Studio located now at 6901 South Louise Avenue. Each week, we have 500 students, ages 2 to adult, go through our dance studio, mainly young girls. I had no idea," and now she dated this yesterday, "until this evening," which was last night, "that there was a possibility of a liquor store going into the space next to me." Now, she means a little bit farther down the street, but she didn't even, wasn't even aware that there was going to be a liquor store in that next place. "Number one, because I worked at a dance studio before that had liquor casino next door, and drunk men would come watch the older dancers at night through the window. Number two, because I asked before purchasing this property if it was zoned for alcohol and was told no, which made me feel okay about purchasing this building. Number three, because I am extremely concerned about my students walking outside at night. While there is a bar next door, we are talking about young women in leotards with drunk men next door. Not only do I feel this is completely inappropriate, I also feel it is very worrisome. Thank you for your time, Renee K. Smith," and she is the owner of the Ballerina Dance Studio. The problems we see is this. The Dunhams, in all sincerity, told us, and her, and many others, there would be no liquor in this area. And I feel sorry for the Dunhams. They've owned this thing, and their investors, for quite some time, and they have not been able to get it filled. As a result, they have turned to some other things which were not part of planning and zoning. Notice-of-hearing signs are not visible from the street. Alcohol and traffic danger for children. Not five foot away from the side of her building, of the ballerina, is where cars will be driving through to pick up liquor. And they will be turning right. Can we, could you show that on the screen? The driveway for the liquor store is coming from the right, and it's coming past the place that's now a fireplace in the backside of the building. The driveway will go south to that first space where you see, okay, you got the, it's coming from the west instead of from the east, but the arrow you have there, it comes from the east. But the driveway will be coming back at the side of the building, turn left, right through there, and immediately on the left side is where the ballerina is. There are little kids, this tall, dancing around there, and when they get through, they're standing outside, walking around, playing some, waiting for their parents to pick them up. We feel there's some danger here. That's number one. Number two, when they leave there, the people pick up with their kids, see the parking lot on the bottom on the left? They are going to go south, which is to the left. There's a driveway right there that's very close to 77th Street. There's room for about one car there. Cars coming from the north on Louise, going south and making a right turn, will be butting those cars coming out. And even now, there's some danger there with the traffic that's already there. I can't blame anybody except the original plat design for the way they allow that entrance, but it's a safety factor that does bother us. I also asked, does this apply to just that one building, or does it apply to the whole plat layout? The present buildings that are in, there's a dandy office building that offices the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation right on the corner. The next building is empty. The next building is the ballerina, and then there's going to be the liquor store, then some empty space again, and then where, was it bogies? I can't remember that name. It's a name I've never heard of before. We have some concern. I must say this. We don't think we, as residents of Platinum Valley, have a strong stand, except from the standpoint we were told there would be no liquor in that area. It probably won't affect us too much, but I am concerned for the owner of the property right behind this area, which is zoned for twin homes only, is going to find it a little more difficult to sell those lots because there's a bar right across the street. And the traffic going down picking up off-sale liquor behind there, there'd be lights flashing around there all the time even though there's a fence up, does also concern me. We are concerned, and I don't know what else I can say, except I think serious thought should be given to the safety of the children and the fact that promises were made that are not being kept.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Just a second. Any questions for John before he steps down?
John, have you been to the bogies location on Marion Road? Have you been by that or driven around that facility?
No, I have not.
Okay.
I didn't know about this until about two days ago, and you know, it's a little bit of a problem. And I'm talking as a citizen now. If you owned a building and you were out of town for a week vacation, the hearing could be held before you ever got back to know that there was going to be a rezoning. It seems to me we should have at least two weeks notice.
I think it's posted for how long? Just one week, yeah?
It's only one week. It was posted on the 28th, and it just isn't a lot of time. And I think people should have a little bit longer period of time to find out about it and then determine what can or could be done.
Appreciate that. Thank you, John.
John, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Gary, did you have anything to add?
Okay. Is there anyone?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Mr. Dunham?
Jim Dunham, 230 South Phillips Avenue. If there's others that would like to speak against it, I'd prefer to go last if there's others in the audience. Then I'll make a couple of brief comments. Where do you start with this one? You know, we did deliver letters to the neighbors behind on Whitsky Avenue, which I did personally. I walked up and down the entire street. Obviously, if you see in the map, these folks are to the south, straight south at the very bottom of the page in a townhome project. I hand-delivered letters to all the neighbors behind on Whitsky Avenue behind the project from 73rd to 77th. If, I did it at night so I could catch most of the people home and actually visit with them, and I would say that the 90% of the people that I actually spoke to actually greeted me, we had a conversation, and they were very excited about the opportunity. I did not have one person have a negative issue that they wanted to share with me about bogies or them going in this building. Unfortunately, the people speaking against it and the Dunham company are going to have to have a little bit of a difference of opinion on what's been said and done over the past years, including the ballerina lady who, I have to, I'm sorry for what she thinks I said to her in the past. I met her and spoke to her for the first time last night. I met her last night. So unfortunately, I have never spoke to her before, so it's, I didn't, I'm sorry if she feels I'm lying to her. Obviously, we all know that we were here a couple months ago, and we did get approval from the group to put a liquor store in the end cap of the building, which is now going under construction. You know, unfortunately, nobody wants liquor or restaurants in this neighborhood. As we already know, Lewis Strug at the corner is going to have a full liquor store, and there's going to be a bar restaurant located next to that. When we did have our neighborhood meeting with, last night at the property, the neighbors did express a concern about the rate of speed that people travel through our development, which is two strip centers and with the bank, four office buildings. We did agree at their request, and something we were unaware of at the time, that they claimed people drive through there fast, and they asked if we would be willing to put stop signs up to at least make the people pause before they pull stop signs up to at least make the people pause before they pull out in traffic. And we said that we certainly would be willing to do that at our expense. I think the last thing I'll say, and certainly be open for questions, is, you know, we do not feel in any shape, manner, or form that the liquor store and Bogies is a last resort for us as an owner of the building. We've developed 300 acres out here. We own this building free and clear. We're absolutely in no hurry for the development. Bogies has leased from us on Marion Road since the early 90s, early 1990s, excuse me, and have been a great tenant since then. And with their other bar restaurants in town, I think are very good neighbors, very good tenants, I think they are considered a very nice neighborhood bar and grill on Marion Road. With that, I'll certainly open up for questions.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim?
Mr. Chair. Jim, the tenant at the dance studio, it was mentioned that she owns her space. Is she a tenant or did she?
No, I'm sorry. Of everything in this area, Security National Bank on one end owns their bank, and Reyna, the Ballerina, the lady that owns Ballerina, she purchased that building from our company and she owns that building. Otherwise, we still own all of those. And I'm very shocked at what she said in the letter, because we met with her for the first time last night, very complimentary of the restaurant, saying she'd be a good tenant. She, you know, expressed concerns about, everybody's concerns seem to be with the liquor store, which of course got approved a couple of months ago. Because of her coming over and expressing concerns about just traffic at the drive-up, we agreed to put behind the building, coming off the building at an angle, signs that say caution, you know, speed, you know, five miles an hour, children present. Obviously, when you come behind the building, it's really more of a glorified alley, I don't see them going more than a couple of miles an hour anyway, and then they gotta take it, make a turn and pull up to a window. We agreed to do, you know, it's too late on that now, it's long since been approved, but we agreed to do whatever we can to minimize the effect of that, to protect our children and...
Jim, we sometimes get involved with the issues where we allow a bar close to a residential neighborhood. And I know the Walls family, the good people, they run a good show. All owners aren't like that. And we'll sometimes see the aftermath of a, an establishment next to a single family. That driveway going into the residential neighborhood is a real concern to me. There's not a way in the world where you're gonna control the traffic getting out of there, probably in that 10 to 2 o'clock range. Might not be an issue, might not ever be a problem. But if it becomes a problem, there's not an awful lot we can do about it. I mean, our hands are gonna be kinda tied.
I'm not sure, I'm familiar with the rules that you guys can set, so I apologize for that, but can you make that a, one of the stipulations that with even his approval, that if it becomes an issue, you can't take that away or you can't do that later?
We'll certainly visit with Steve about that.
I'm willing to do that. I mean, I've talked to, I mean, I'm not the owner of the property, but I've talked to the owner, which is of course, my father, our investment group, and he said, you have no problem with that whatsoever. I actually called the fire department to make sure we could remove it, that there was, that it wasn't an access point that was required. Frankly, we can't remember why it went in originally to begin with. So, other than I think the fact that you come out of this property on Louise Avenue, off the curb cut you see there, there's a median in the middle of the road. So you have to go south, do a U-turn, come back. I mean, it's, you know, what we're gonna have to get used to in the city is the falls, but it's an inconvenience. So I'm assuming, we were figuring five buildings plus a number of retail tenants, it was just another opportunity for them to get out. I think the thing a lot of people are forgetting, Platinum Valley is really a defined area, and I agree, it's nice houses with a lot of great people living in it. But when you go out that way, unless you live in the neighborhood, you're not gonna get anywhere. If you continue going north, you're gonna hit Interstate 229. You go to the west, you're gonna hit Interstate 29. I mean, unless you live in Platinum Valley itself, you're not gonna get out that way. I mean, you, you might go a block or two, but then you ultimately are gonna have to get back to Louise Avenue, 69th Street, 85th, I mean, you can't continue going.
That's my concern about the use of that driveway. It is an inconvenience to go out and go south. And I think that driveway is gonna get used a lot in and out of that residential neighborhood.
Well, I'm just saying, that's the reason it won't get used, is that everybody knows that if you go out it, you're gonna have to turn, so go back out to Louise Avenue. You might as well just go straight out to Louise Avenue. Benefit here, which, part of the problem they're talking about where they want the stop sign put up, which we're willing to do, is that at least does take you to a signalized intersection that then you can get back to the north without having to do a U-turn in the middle of Louise Avenue, which someday will be busy in this area. But if you, if you wanna make it part of a stipulation, we're certainly willing to. Obviously, we don't know yet what kind of an impact it will have in the neighborhood. And that is why I personally delivered all the letters to Witski and talked to everybody that was home that night, just so that we could address those concerns.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Jim? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address item number nine? We'll take one more person if it's different and relevant.
I will be very quick. My name is Luanne Decker, and I live on Witski Avenue between 77th and 73rd. I did get the letter, it was stuffed in our driveway, in our, in our door. When we came home the other night, we noticed it. The thing we did not know is that there was going to be off-sale liquor, that it was a little bit different than this very nice letter, a little neighborhood bar seemed a whole lot different than what I'm hearing. We had no idea that there was a rezoning thing going on here. We just moved into that neighborhood last August. It's a wonderful residential neighborhood. We however face that commercial area. So we are very concerned about what happens in that commercial district. We're worried about the traffic, we're worried about the lighting, which of course is necessary, that will be facing us. And it's important to our neighborhood what happens to that area. And I know that my neighbors on Witski Avenue do agree with that, that we are very concerned about the development of a commercial in our very nice residential street. So keep that in mind when you make your decisions.
Luanne, it's on-sale alcohol.
And there will be no drive-through then?
I don't believe there will be.
Unfortunately, we're still talking about what we had approved two months ago, which is off-sale liquor.
Yes, that we were totally unaware of.
What are we talking about?
No, tonight it's just on-sale.
Exactly. The point is, none of our neighbors in Witski Avenue were aware of this zoning thing last March either. And I think that here we are as a last-ditch effort to try to do something that's, that we maybe aren't able to change. But it's important that you know how we feel about this.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for Luanne? Thank you. One last comment.
Yes, sir, and I, totally unrelated, but what she was talking about, I think it's important to understand, the building isn't gonna change. The building's there, it's been there a couple of years. The landscaping's not gonna change, the lighting's not gonna change, I mean, nothing in and of what you're gonna see day and night's gonna change. The only thing that's gonna change is what's on the inside of the building.
And the signage on the front.
And the signage facing Louise Avenue, right. We've agreed, nothing will be on the back of the building. Public access points, signage, nothing.
Okay. Any questions for Jim?
Jim, the off-sale liquor was approved two months ago. Were you here for that?
Yes.
Doesn't even register in my mind, and I'd have been here too. Was that on a consent agenda?
Yes.
Or was that a discussed item?
Consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Well, I'll make a motion for discussion purposes. I'd make a motion for approval. However, I would change that up just a little bit. I would add another...
You're adding a stipulation?
I would add another stipulation, and that would be the, that second paragraph under special information. This major amendment would have to add, under other regulations, the requirement that on-sale alcohol is allowed in the sub-area only by special use permit.
Steve?
That would be the correct wording. It would require the applicant to come back with an application for a special use permit. At that time, you could address the situation with possible impacts of lighting, traffic, parking, whatever.
Steve, while you're back there, staff is recommending approval of this item. Hearing some of the discussion that you've heard here tonight, would staff have a different thought about approval of this particular item?
No, I think staff's recommendation would stay the same for approval, but under what conditions? And I believe that there are conditions that could be worked out to allow the use to be compatible with the neighborhood. Again, with the thought that if it doesn't work out, you do have the opportunity to take that special use away.
Boy, I know that driveway goes back a long time ago. I can't think of another commercial piece of property that, since I've been here, where I've seen a driveway put in like that off of commercial usage into, right into the residential neighborhood. Steve, it's probably too long ago for you to remember how that came about, but...
As I remember it, and I believe I was here when that did go through public hearings, it was, it had to do somewhat with fire protection, police protection, two ways in and out kind of things. But basically, it was, it was set up as part of the subdivision plan to provide access from the neighborhood to the development, not the other way around. It wasn't set up to alleviate any traffic problems of getting out onto the major street.
I think the thought process back then was that it was gonna be an office for retail usage, that it wasn't gonna be, you know, used like it's being looked at now.
That's correct.
And this probably isn't a fair question to ask you.
Kenny, we should, let's get a second before we go into the discussion here too deep.
Oh, I was just getting started.
You were just getting started. Is there a second to...
Kenny, I'll second your motion for discussion.
No.
Steve, don't leave yet, please. I forgot what I was gonna ask. There's some conversation about, gosh, we didn't know this was up to be rezoned. Now, to be a full-blown on-sale liquor, they're required to have a neighborhood meeting, are they not?
It's not a requirement, as far as the ordinance goes. It's always a recommendation from us to the applicant to do that, simply because public hearings are not the place to work out any agreements with the neighborhood.
With the, they're required to post it seven days before the meeting. I know in the old days, depending on scheduling as such, you guys used to go out and just kinda double-check that these were getting posted, did you not?
We always do site visits, but not necessarily at the time of posting. Usually, we wait to hear a call that a sign is blown down, or, usually they don't all blow down at the same time. So if there are no signs, and we didn't get an affidavit, or if we don't get any calls from a neighbor, and we don't get an affidavit from the petitioner, then we know it hasn't been posted, and we defer action on it until it is posted and we get that affidavit. We depend a lot on that affidavit coming in in a timely fashion to carry forward to the public hearing. Like I say, all four signs don't usually blow down at the same time, and some applicants will call up and say, well, I had a sign blow down, I need another one, and take care of it that way. But we don't go out and check on every project to see if the signs are up or not.
And the reason that was on the consent agenda then a couple of months ago is because we heard from nobody, heard from no neighbors, we heard nothing derogatory. If you would have heard something, would that automatically have pulled it from the consent agenda?
That's correct. It would have automatically gone onto the regular agenda if we, if somebody had called us.
Even if it had been just a straight phone call?
If no concern was expressed, it could stay on the consent agenda, but we would report the fact in our report that there was a caller.
Actually, it was an amendment, major amendment, it wasn't...
It was a major amendment to allow the use, that's correct. The final development plan had already been approved.
Yeah, so it was, wasn't really, really a rezone.
Steve, this probably isn't a fair question. If that was a existing Bogies there right now, can the owner come back and ask for permission to put that driveway into the residential?
They could, yes.
Would staff recommend something like that, do you think?
No. In fact, we have a precedent as far as staff's opinion on that. Similar situation along Minnesota Avenue, where the applicant wanted to provide access from a parking lot to a on-sale establishment out to a residential neighborhood, and we specifically said, no way.
See, that's what I, that one's in my mind, Steve, and I, if we approve this, do you feel there's a difference for that gentleman not coming back and saying, hey, wait a minute? Here's a, here's a situation up here where there's a driveway going into the residential neighborhood?
I don't think so, because your previous question as to how the driveway got there in the first place, it was put in because it was supposed to serve an office development, not a commercial development.
Thank you, Steve.
Kenny, I'm wondering if we would add some stipulations, not only like you're discussing, but discussing, but that maybe it would be for this petitioner only, and that if, for whatever reason, somebody else came to look at it, this didn't happen, that another petitioner would have to go through the same process. So along with allowing them to have to come back for special use, then we could require that petitioner, this petitioner only, and then obviously a security management plan that can be reviewed.
Jesse, I hear ya. Excuse me.
Just a second.
Just a quick comment, that's something you would do at the time of the special use permit?
Yes.
Yes.
Jesse, I'm not sure I'm gonna support the motion.
Kenny, I'm not saying we would do it at this time. I'm saying when they come back for the special use, then those stipulations will be on there for that petitioner.
I think if it doesn't pass tonight, I don't think they come back for special use, do they?
Not if it doesn't pass.
Any other discussion?
I don't know how everybody else is feeling. I mean...
So I may, since we're in the mode of working things out, we have a suggestion from the petitioner that they'd be willing to make that driveway a one-way in, no access out. That means they would have to enforce it because it's a driveway. City would not be in a position of enforcing that, but they're willing to try.
Well, that'd certainly make me feel better, I guess, in regards to the driveway as far as accessing onto the...
And that you could put on as another regulation at the present time, or you could wait till the special permit, special use permit, either one.
Steve, explain this, if we were to say, yes, but you have to get a special permit, that starts the whole process again?
That's correct. It's a new application. Deadline is Monday.
And so they would then have to come back, but we would have approved the zoning?
You would have approved the zoning, but the special use permit would allow it under what conditions? You're saying that a special use permit is required for this particular use. And in that special use permit, you would apply whatever other regulations or conditions for approval that you want.
Under those conditions, I would be in favor of supporting this. It gives an opportunity for the neighbors, the developer, to sit back down at the table again, work out some possible remedies for both the neighbors and for the developer, clarification of maybe what was said, who said, what said, without just saying, shutting it down and saying, we'll see you in six months and see what happens. I'd like to give them the opportunity to come back and see if there's a possibility, if anything, that can be worked out that's amenable to both.
Jesse, I think that would almost take a deferral. I think if we voted to go ahead with the special use, we will have approved the zoning. It's just what regulations would put on the special use at that point.
Kenny, this is a major, another major amendment that we're working on tonight. So we're permitting this specific use.
Exactly. I think we're kinda saying the same thing. I don't know what that leaves time to work out between the two parties. He will have, he will have obtained his zoning.
But if one of the stipulations is the requirement for a special use permit, they still have to go through that process.
And so the zoning does not take effect unless the special use permit is agreed?
It becomes allowed, but only if they're successful getting a special use permit.
If it comes next month, they can't come to some sort of agreement, they can't, then I think we have the opportunity to say, you know what? This is here and there, we're not gonna move it forward. But I'd like to allow them to get some time to get it worked out.
Steve, help me one more time. Just explain to me, if we vote and approve this, what will we have done?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get all the questions.
If we were to vote and approve this, make it subject to a special use permit, what will we have done?
You will have allowed on-sale alcohol as a use at that location, at that address and legal description, only if a special use permit is approved, only with a special use permit. And in order to apply for that, they would have to come in, you know, by the deadline. We were just talking here, talking about deadlines. The major amendment would go forward to the city council for approval of the use being allowed at that location, and the effective date on that would be after the special use permit hearing. So at the special use permit hearing, you would have to actually specify an effective date of that special use permit, if you're inclined to consider it at that time. And that would have to be conditioned on approval by the city council, so it gets a little complicated, but that's, it can be done. It'd be better to wait until the next round, which would be two application deadlines from now, at which time then, your public hearing on the special use permit would be after the city council had acted on it. But we can work that out with the applicant if you approve it this evening.
Any other questions for Steve? Thanks, Steve. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, and I believe we have five stipulations. Number one, no public entrance to an on-sale alcohol establishment from the west side of the building. Number two, no sign visible on the west side or ends of the building. Number three is the requirement to come back for a special use permit. Number four, that this application is for this petitioner only, and that the drive to the west become a one-way in. Is that how the commission understands the motion?
I'm good with all of those.
Are you ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed signify by saying no.
No.
Motion fails. Okay. We are now at item 10. Mr. Hovland.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name is Dave Loveland. I'll be representing planning staff on this item and another item later this evening. The application before you is a conditional use permit in the RS2 residential district to construct an assisted living facility. The applicant is Paul Hague, representing Esprit of Sioux Falls Incorporated. The general location of this is located in the northwest corner of West 85th Street and South Minnesota Avenue, which is right behind where you know Landscape Garden Centers to be. The area in question is just over four acres, at 4.17 acres. And when considering abutting zoning and land uses, to the north, you have Subarea A of the Garden Village, which is currently a single-family residential, which has a compatibility rating of four. To the south is RD and RA1 residential, which is currently vacant, which is also a compatibility of four. To the east is Subarea A of the Garden Village II Plan Development District, and that currently houses Landscape Garden Center, which, but because of the commercial nature of potential redevelopment at that location, the compatibility is a three. And to the west is the RS2 residential district, which is currently home to a single-family residential uses, and that compatibility rating we've assigned as a four. As Steve mentioned in the last report, the potential incompatibility with a three is that the proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing adjacent uses, which may be remedied or minimized through project design. And keep in mind that this rating of a three applies to the east side of this property line, too, as related to the commercial uses to the east. And so through project design, they're able to minimize some of those conflicts. The conditional use permit standard for an assisted living center is that such uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be a detriment due to their large traffic flow or parking area. Such uses located in RS1, RS2, and RD residential districts shall have a maximum building height limit of two stories. The site description is the project specifically located on West 81st, what will become West 81st Street and South Audi Avenue, which is just west of South Minnesota and north of West 85th Street. The access to the site, access to the site will come from West 81st Street off of South Audi Avenue initially. West 81st Street will have a future connection to South Minnesota Avenue, and no transit stops are located within 600 feet. On the conditional use plan, the applicant will be required to provide a 25-foot front yard setback and 15-foot rear and side yard setbacks for the facility, and they have provided that on their plan. The project is anticipating, parking, the project is anticipated to provide 48 rooms, which would require 36 parking stalls. The submitted plans show 46 parking stalls. As far as other comments that we received from other agencies involved in the site plan review, from the drainage comment, and this is an informational comment only, is that the site is planned to be served by an existing BMP in the Garden Village addition, the applicant should coordinate with the developer on the maintenance of the BMP as it will be privately owned and maintained. So for the staff analysis of this subject application, is the applicant has provided a well-designed structure and site plan for the proposed assisted living facility. The facility is planned to have 48 rooms with 56 beds, with possible expansion of an additional 48 rooms and 56 beds. The possible expansion is essentially a mirror image of what's being currently proposed. But this application will cover the entire site if approved, including both phases, and a future expansion will not need a new public hearing unless characteristics of that expansion and site design are significantly altered from what's approved tonight. At this location, an assisted living center represents a desirable land use, as it will serve as an effective land use transition from the commercial property to the east and the single-family residential to the west. In addition, the applicant has developed a landscape plan that will provide screening of the facility from those residential properties by utilizing a landscape screen composed of Austrian pine, Black Hill spruce, and Autumn Brilliant service berry. West 81st Street, as I mentioned earlier, will be initially built with a temporary cul-de-sac for emergency vehicle turnaround. The construction of the road is necessary for access to the assisted living facility, but future plans indicate that the street will connect to South Minnesota Avenue with a full-access signalized intersection. Staff recommendation is that because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and requires a complete plan check by building and zoning services prior to the obtaining of a building permit, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit with following conditions, that, with following one condition, which is the landscape screening line along the west property line will be installed and maintained as permitted, as per the submitted site plans. That concludes staff report. As you know, though, we have neighborhoods who are here to speak on the item, and both the applicant and the representative of Esprit are here to speak as well.
Thank you, David. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair. David, on the setbacks?
Yeah.
The 25, is that standard setbacks for this type of zoning?
That is the standard setback for RS2 zoning, yes. And they are required to have a 15-foot rear and side yard setbacks, which is in addition to, if you had a single-family home in that area, you'd only need five-foot side yard setbacks. But other uses that are allowed within the RS2, such as this use, would require a 15-foot side yard setback.
If this was a housing development, what would the backyard requirements?
Backyard would be 25 feet.
Would be 25? The side yards could be as narrow as 15, or as wide as 5.
I want to clarify that, too, because what we would consider the rear yard on this site plan application would be to the north. Now, their, their side yard is to the west, and so on their, on their west property line, they're required a 15-foot side yard setback, and to the north is where they're required the 25-foot.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here this evening?
Paul Hague, 1300 West 57th Street. I think most of you are aware, if you don't know, that my family's involved in the real estate and development business, and the things we tend to do or try to do are to, you know, create economic development, be a good community citizen, as well as be a good neighbor, and design facilities that are appealing to those around us. And, you know, Dave has laid out the, the plan that we've put forth here, and as you are probably aware, there is some opposition to that, or some concerns from some of the neighbors, and, and just want to make sure that we address those with you in that, what we set out to do was to create something good for the community, to serve the community that, with people afflicted with Alzheimer's and dementia. And so we set forth to find land that was properly zoned for that use, in an area that was easy, relatively accessible to, to our residents and to our residents' families. And so we did that as well. And so we set out, we did that. We found a piece of land that was zoned correctly, needed to go through a conditional use permit. We put the land under contract in such that we're buying the land in a fully improved site, so we're not putting the 81st Street in. That's the role of the land developer. So we, you know, paid for the land accordingly to that price. And, and so, and then we set forth and laid the plans out in accordance with what the jurisdiction shows, with the 15-yard, 15-foot setback, 25-foot front, et cetera. We've made it a single-story in, in design, which was something we were planning to do anyway, but we feel that's a good way to meld into the residential area to the west, and a good transition to the more commercial area to the east. So we, and we adhered to the landscaping plans, and we feel that we've come forth and set forth that, the way it was intended to be. We also took the, the initiative of sending out a neighborhood meeting to all of those neighbors that touched the property. And we had that meeting on April 20th. We sent the letter about, out about a week in advance of that, and we held the meeting, gave the information. We probably had 10 to 12 people show up for that meeting. After that, it, that's when the issues started to come up, where the concerns of the neighborhood came up. And from that time forth, we've probably been, my partner, Steve, and, and my sister is a partner as well, Kristin, have been, Steve has been in constant communication with the neighbors. We did meet with them again last night to try to listen to their concerns and their issues. Councilman Jameson has been involved in this for about the last two weeks as well, or last week and a half. He's been a terrific resource for us, and we appreciate his involvement in this. Again, this is intended to be a good neighbor aspect, so that's why we went forth and wanted to communicate that to them. And, you know, we walked away from that meeting yesterday feeling that there were, there are a number of issues, some of them, you know, that are really outside of our control, some of them that we can probably have some control over. And so we, we walked away and we kind of asked them, you know, for kind of their three top concerns. And what I'm really here to address, and I think that's what the whole concept behind this meeting is, is to address the facility itself, or the, the use of the facility on the land. It's not intended to address what the, you know, the nature of the residents and the people that are in there, but we do have people here that will speak to that, about what Alzheimer and dementia is, and how it's not a, a negative to the community or to the neighborhood. But what I'm here to address is, is the facility itself. And so we walked away with what they kind of put in our lap were the three top concerns, and the first one was the road, about 81st Street. Well, I don't have any control over the road. That's not my, my deal. It's the land developers and, and how they coordinate that with the city and what have you. We just need access, and that's what they're providing us. The second one was the landscaping of the trees. And we've put in the, you know, what is required, and we agree to, to adhere to the stipulation that is put forth to the size and, and number of trees. You know, to talk about whether or not it's a six-foot tree, or if it's a seven-foot tree, it becomes kind of subjective, and it's hard to administer and rule, I think, you know, to say, "Well, it's got to be this size or this," you know, to appease everybody." And so I think that's why you have the standard set that you do, and we're willing to comply with that. And then the third thing would be that we heard yesterday, and the number one thing that we heard from the neighbors was the side yard setback of the 15 feet, that it was too close. And that came up repeatedly. And so we, we, you know, we kind of sat back and, and looked at that, and, and so now we're here today, you know, feeling this is a, a good opportunity for the, the community. And again, I'll go back to the three kind of, you know, goals that we set forth, and the fact of what we do as developers, is that we want to provide economic development. And we feel that this opportunity is going to provide economic development, and our numbers are showing that we're probably going to create 35 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, for the community. In an economy like we are in today, I think job creation is a wonderful thing. In addition to that, we'll probably be generating about $1.5 million in salaries and benefits to those people. So they're high-paying, well-paying jobs for the CNAs and the LPNs and the RNs and the administrators that we're going to have in this facility. And I also want to mention, this is an assisted living center. There's some confusion out here that this is a nursing home. It's not a nursing home. We are regulated by the state in how we conduct our business relative to that. So if there's some back and forth about whether this is assisted living and nursing home, it is an assisted living center. The second thing is being a good community member, and, you know, I think we're creating something here that's a niche, that is going to service people that you may know, or a loved one that you may have that may be afflicted with, afflicted with this disease. And it's an unfortunate thing that anybody has to experience it, but we're all going to experience it in greater and greater amounts in the future to come. So we feel like we're being a good community member. And lastly, we want to be a good neighbor. And with that in mind, as we sat back and we looked at this, you know, we would be willing to take that 15-foot setback, and we'd be willing to add another 10 feet to that. So we'd be willing to do that at, to 25 feet. And I think the, the thing to look at is that, if you look at the, the wing that faces to the west, that wing is, is 65, 64 feet wide. That's 64 feet wide. That is the only one that is within that 15-foot side yard setback. Well, if we add another 10 feet to that, that's 25 feet to that side. If you look at the, if you look at that area, now we're up to over 100 feet from the side, to the side yard setback. So we're only talking about a small area there that really is, is being affected, and we're willing to, to give that extra 10 feet to try to be a good neighbor and give that buffer to the residential residents that live there. And we feel that may be, you know, again, a good way of being a good neighbor. So those are the, you know, the main points, I guess, that, that we wanted to address, and I'd be willing to take any questions.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul?
I have a question, Meredith. Paul, I think you, in more of a statement, you addressed what the role of this body is, and that is to address land use issues as they pertain to the city of Sioux Falls. I understand what you're saying about economic development and growth in salaries. That's all great, but that does not come into consideration when we look at what's going on here. We have to look at, is this a good and proper land use for this area? So I think that's really what we want to focus on. I appreciate that you are listening to the neighbors and you're willing to make some concessions on some side yards, but overall, I think your intentions are great. But really, as it relates to land use in an RS2 residential district and what's appropriate in there, that's what we're going to talk about, and I think we'll be willing to hear from the neighbors and what they have to say, but this is an approved use in an RS2.
Sure. I'm just trying to give you a rounded approach.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Kenny?
Paul, by increasing that side yard to 25 feet, I like the sound of that. Would that also pertain to Phase 2?
Yes, because the buildings are connected, so they're going to have a connection, so they're going to have to be engineered to the, the same setback.
I, I think that section that, that addresses the housing issue might require maybe just a little bit more landscaping than what the city maybe feels is adequate. I, I think I'm hearing that if it took something like that... I, I, I think I'm hearing that if it took something like that to, to have some smooth sailing here, you're open-minded to, to something like that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm, we're open to that and I think if we can, you know, as long as we can have a defined, you know, kind of like it is now, what is defined, if we can have a defined objective, what that's supposed to be, yeah. I just don't want to get into putting the landscaping in and then having some subjective, you know, well, that's not where I wanted the tree and that one's not tall enough and, you know, if, if we can come to that resolution beforehand, within reason, I mean, it's also one of those things that I can't afford to go in and put, you know, fifteen to twenty-foot trees in either, you know, that are full, fully mature because A, I'm not sure it's possible and that they would survive and B, it becomes a cost.
I drove by there, it looks like a tree farm, I believe, Paul.
It is a tree farm, yeah, yeah. I would think that we, we have a line on finding some trees, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul. I suspect a lot of you are here tonight to address this issue. And if there's a spokesperson identified, we'd certainly like to have that person come up first. If not, we're going to try to keep each person's testimony to five minutes to allow as many people to speak as possible. If it goes on too long, we may stop if there's nothing new or relevant as a part of the discussion. So is there someone from the audience that wants to address this issue?
Hi, my name is Janet Jelkin. I live at 700 West Trade Winds here in Sioux Falls. And I don't know if all of you received a packet that I sent your way in the mail with some information. First, I'd like to say that as a neighborhood, we're compassionate towards the elderly that suffer from dementia and Alzheimer's disease. Many of us have personally felt the devastating effects of this disease from our family members. We feel like a center like this would be, help a lot of families. However, we do not feel this type of center is appropriate in a residential neighborhood. Esperet Memory Care has applied for a conditional use permit in a residential zone to build an assisted living center. According to the document obtained from the Planning and Zoning Office, I quote, "An assisted living center and congregate care facility is defined as a facility to provide apartment living for persons over age fifty-five or persons subject to chronic illnesses or infirmities, but do not need a level of nursing care provided in a licensed nursing home. Assisted living centers need not be licensed by the state of South Dakota, but must provide at least one common hot meal per day. An example of this type of facility is found in your packet. It's called Diamond Crest, along with a floor plan of such an apartment. However, their intent is to build a memory center, which will eventually house one hundred and twelve patients. What is a memory center? It is not an assisted living center. It is a secured facility dedicated solely to the treatment of dementia and Alzheimer's disease. A recent article in Argus on May 1st states that there will also be a behavioral wing for those who need more supervision. According to a Mayo Clinic article, and I can share a couple of these with you. Dementia and Alzheimer's disease are mental illnesses that fall under the class of cognitive disorders. Some of the symptoms Alzheimer's patients suffer, according to the information gathered from a website for Wellsted and Rogers, the facility in Minnesota, which this proposed center is patterned after, are A, cognitive changes, memory loss, loss of ability for decision-making, forgetfulness, impaired judgment, disorientation, and confusion; B, personality changes, anger, restlessness, withdrawal, lethargy, or hyperactivity, paranoia, aggression, hostility, delusions, sexual exposure, and violent episodes; C, functional changes, inability to perform daily tasks such as dressing, neglect of health and hygiene, sleep disturbance, disturbances, shuffle gait, and seizures. Since the zoning code does not include specific description for, for an institutional facility, I was given this description from the International Building Code, which is followed by the city of Sioux Falls, from the zoning office. It more accurately describes the proposed facility in Section 308 Institutional Group One. 308.2 states, "This occupancy shall include building structures or parts thereof housing more than sixteen persons on a twenty-four-hour basis who, because of age, mental disability, or other reasons, lived in a supervisor, supervised residential environment that provides personal care services. The occupants are capable of responding to an emergency situation without physical assistance from staff." And 308.3 more accurately, accurately describes the level four patients at this type of facility, and I quote, "This occupancy shall include buildings and structures used for medical, surgical, psychiatric, nursing, or custodial care for persons who are not capable of self-preservation. This group shall include, but not be limited to, the following: childcare facilities, detoxification facilities, hospitals, mental hospitals, and nursing homes. An example of this type of facility is also in your packet, Wellsted of Rogers, along with a floor plan of their household units. These are not apartments. They have shared areas such as living, dining, and community rooms. The patients are housed in private bedrooms, some with shared bathrooms. This is the facility proposed. The proposed memory center will be patterned after. The RS2 zoning of the proposed area does not include conditional uses for an institutional facility. When this property was, was rezoned on February 16th, it was rezoned from agricultural to RS2. At this time, if this project was being considered by a developer for this land, a more appropriate request for its owning should have been an S institutional zoning. This more accurately describes this type of use, of land use. Assisted living centers or nursing homes are permissible and do not require a conditional use in an institutional district. According to the article in Sioux Falls Business Journal on April 21st, Steve Wester, CEO of Esperet Memory Care, is quoted saying, "It is a concept that is completely new to the Sioux Falls market." Unquote. Currently, there is no specific zoning land use for this type of facility, a memory center." Excuse me, I'm kind of dry. This is something that we need to look at. In conclusion, we feel the requested conditional use application for property as an assisted living center is invalid. It does not describe the planned facility. An institution of this size and scope should not be approved in a RS2 zone. We ask that you deny the request for conditional use of this property.
Thank you. Any questions for Janet? Kenny?
Janet, how many people are here from that neighborhood or representing that neighborhood? Is there anybody here in the neighborhood in favor of this particular? Janet, do you see any, any, any way that this could be put into that neighborhood and be a betterment or... There's a part of me that kind of goes, gosh, might not be too bad of a neighbor.
I think the main concerns of the neighborhood should be addressed by the next person.
And, and the reason I say that, and this sometimes gets confusing, RS2, there are a number of different things that can go into an RS2-zoned property. That's, that's my reason for saying that. And I might have Dave come up and just give us a quick rundown of what is allowed uses in an RS2, David.
Janet?
Janet, hang on just a second.
Janet, we, we may need to ask you more questions. Hang around here for just a second, please.
Well, as far as allowed uses in the RS2, I mean, obviously you have your single-family residential, and then you have permissive uses, which is a permissive use, and then you have permitted special uses, which are allowed if, if they meet certain conditions. Those things can be like, you know, a public utility facility or something like that, if they've provided the things that are outlined. And then there's a conditional use permit, which allows things, you know, like this assisted living facility, nursing home, and those types of things by, by certain conditions, which is the, you know, a conditional use permit. So how is this use allowed and under what conditions is it allowed? So the zoning district itself says this isn't allowed use here. Now how do you go about allowing it? And so, you know, what are the things that they need to do to make this a use that is compatible with its adjacent uses? And so those are the kinds of things that you're looking at. And, and we're talking about external land use. We're not talking about the internal operation of the facility. We're talking about an external land use. What are the impacts that you need to consider as far as traffic, lighting, landscaping, you know, any of those types of things?
Screening.
And so, I mean, that's...
David, while you're, while you're up here, I think it's important to differentiate between land use ordinances and building codes.
Right. Well, and that's, and that was a...
The institutional classification is an occupancy type.
Yep.
Used to determine square footage, types of fire protection, exiting, and things like that really don't carry over to land use.
Right. And building code, is it different than the zoning code, which is also different from the fire code? You may remember applications in the past where you have a fire occupancy of, say, ninety-nine people, but the zoning ordinance allows twenty-eight people because there are seven parking stalls on site. And so those are, those are differences in how it's viewed. But now you're viewing it from a land use standpoint, which is the zoning ordinance. So, you know, anything related to the internal operation and what licensing they may need comes from the state. And so the impacts are external that you're considering.
David, in our staff meeting yesterday, staff really feels this is a good use for that ground up there. At least I was left with that impression.
Absolutely.
Anything being, well, it's probably not fair to ask you that just yet because we don't have all our testimony yet, but...
Well, I guess I'll let you finish the question.
No. Nothing you've heard to, to this point has changed staff's position?
No, I mean, you know, as I outlined in the staff report, this is a transitional use from a commercial highway and commercial uses along that corridor to a single-family residential. We look for this stuff all the time, all over the city, whether it's office uses or multifamily uses or these types of small institutional uses. These serve as, as great buffers, in our opinion, and from the opinion of the comprehensive plan that has been recently adopted in transitioning land uses from higher intensity things like a commercial district to these low-density residential districts.
David, I, I think some of these folks out here own homes up there and I'm sure they did their due diligence. They probably checked, hey, what's this zoned? And I think it was zoned agriculture up until...
Well, it wasn't even annexed until the, until a couple, probably late in 2009.
2009? Then it came in for the RS2 zoning in, at the time it was...
Well, they did a few, I, I think the annexation occurred last summer. The Future Land Use Amendment, which conforms to these boundaries, was done last fall. And then the zoning was done in, I believe it was January or February of this year.
I suspect that most people assuming that, A, there's going to be houses there, kind of like ours, and then have, have something other than that, probably taken some of these folks over by surprise.
I think one of the things that, you know, we need to, that I, I think the neighbors feel differently from how we've, we, we, our codes adopted, is that this is not a residential use. This is a residential use. We've had it as a residential use since we adopted the zoning ordinance in 1982, and there's examples all over the city of these being residential uses. And so, you know, we allow churches, we allow schools, all of those types of things that serve the community at large in residential neighborhoods because they're considered a community service as, to provide the edu, for the education, care, or worship of the residents.
David, thank you.
Any other questions for David?
Dave, you talked about the 2035 plan. Do, do you have that here where it talks about RS2 and differences between?
Yeah.
Can we put that on that overhead? Again, Kenny, I think that's something that we, we really need to, to make clear that this is residential. They may not think that it's residential, but it is residential. In and around all of Sioux Falls, we have assisted livings, nursing homes, churches, and schools that are nestled right in the middle of our, where we all live. And though they may feel that it's not what it's on paper as, but that's the classification that it fits. And so it is indeed residential. Yeah, here, here's kind of what I'm looking at. In this small institutional district, and then, excuse me, all of these items are allowed as conditional uses in the RS2. Is that correct, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
And some of them are even permissive special, like the schools and churches.
That we wouldn't even be having a conversation if it was a school or church.
If this were a school, we wouldn't even be here.
So what you're saying is if I wanted to build a school there, I could just start digging?
Yeah. You wouldn't need planning commission approval for a school.
Anything else, David? Any other questions for David?
I'll go to the second page, too.
Okay.
Janet?
Yes.
The offer that Mr. Hig made of making that setback going from fifteen to twenty-five feet, does that help, help your situation or your, or your thinking at all?
To be honest with you, I'm not one of the houses that is on the fifteen-foot setback. I would like to let the people who are in that situation talk to you more about that. As my, my part was just to bring forth that applying for assisted living, which is apartment homes for elderly, and this type of institution are not the same. If you look at the S Institution Code zoning area, these are permissible in an institutional zone. They are conditional in a residential zone. So I guess it's my feeling because of the scope and the size of this facility, and if you look at the map, it's nestled pretty tight in there, that it just isn't a good fit for this land at this time. I did look back at the, the rezoning that was done, I think it was, let's see, February 16th. None of the neighbors were aware of that because of the snow hiding the signs. I did look that up on the internet and watch it. As they had the map up on the screen, they said that this area, RS2, would most likely be multifamily homes and then town homes, well, I am sorry, single-family homes, town homes, and multifamily homes going into the commercial on the other side. So that's what was presented or talked about at the zoning meeting that none of us were able to begin.
I think that's the transition Dave was referring to from one from commercial.
That was a normal transition that would occur.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Tanyel Sylvester, I reside at 7104 South Wilshire Pine Avenue.
First name again?
Tanyel. Just like Danielle with a T, I get that all the time.
Oh, okay.
We have had two neighborhood meetings upon the notification from the Esperet facility at which they held the meeting and we were initially made aware that this was transpiring. We've had two neighborhood meetings since that time, so I'm hoping to address and extent the majority of the concerns from the neighborhood. Steve Wester was not able to attend our first meeting, he had a prior engagement, and we did give him only a half-day notice on that, so we understand that. He did attend the meeting with us last evening and listened to our concerns, but we did not come to any concrete agreements and we felt that after he left, the neighborhood met in addition, we have significant concerns on our end and appreciate the opportunity to give you our perspective as we understand you've seen theirs probably in more detail than ours. Similar to the earlier statement, or the zoning issue that was before us, of concern is the lack of notification. You can see tonight that there are a number of supportive neighbors. We are individuals who pay attention to our land. We purchased our homes knowing that having a tree farm back there was a pipe dream. The fake ridge, as we lovingly call it, was probably going to go to the wayside, but we were all led to believe by a variety of people, including the zoning information that we had received at that time. And I've included in the packet that I believe you were given at the beginning of this meeting, that zoning notification. I hung on to that. I've hung on to everything that I've received. That was given to us via mail, so understand that that was probably, from my perspective, improved notification over the sign postings option. According to that, we were led to believe that there would be single-family homes directly behind our property. And according to our real estate agents, the property owner... behind our property, and according to our real estate agents, the property owner himself, et cetera, that was kind of always the message given to us. So, needless to say, we were caught very off-guard by the idea that nursing homes, assisted living homes, facilities of this nature are considered residential. That was not something that any of us were educated on, and that might be fault of our own. I would argue that I don't think the majority of citizens in Sioux Falls understand that. Janet mentioned, but you know, even within the February city council meeting when they were discussing the rezoning, it was talked about single-family homes here, town homes here, multifamily apartments, livings here. That was what we assumed would happen. Had we known that this type of facility of this size and scope would be positioned this close to our residential property, unanimously, we would not have purchased our homes. So, we feel as though we were here with a certain understanding. That's now changed. There are no through streets adjacent to the property where the public notification signs were posted. It is, and if you saw from the aerial map, it is basically a landlocked area. There are no through streets. The, it is private property. The signs that were posted, as my understanding, were in the four corners of this property, a posting in February, in particular of this year. Strongly makes me question whether or not they were visible. In fact, the signs that were posted for this most recent conditional use permit were up for two days, and then, over the weekend, I believe, due to the high winds, I don't know, they were, two of those were down as well. So, the sign postings, we were paying attention this time because we had been given prior notification. We had no notification back in February, and that's a significant concern. Has nothing to do, to be honest, with the developer. It has to do with just the city protocol and things like that. So, this is a point that we'd like to raise with you. Key points according to the City of Sioux Falls Growth Management Strategy, this has been an education the last couple of weeks, so we've done as much research as we can, but have had a short amount of time to do that. Within that, it talks about intently requiring that new developments be compatible with existing adjacent developments. I understand that this is considered a residential facility. It is their homes as such, but again, I would argue that a facility that's going to house a hundred and twelve patients in addition to the employees as such is a large facility. And so, I'm not an expert. I don't know what constitutes low-density, high-density residential, but I have some questions that with regard to the amount of individuals within the proximity that's listed at this time. Maintain suitable transition zones is discussed within the Sioux Falls Growth Management Strategy. Currently, there are approximately twelve existing residential backyards. If you include the Garden Village, there is a pond separating those, but their backyards will be adjacent to this facility. I've attached the aerial mic that's the same as the one up there, just so you could see how exactly the property lines fall and that the homes are not deep yards. They're set close to the property that's being sold. The Esprit architectural images, we felt were very misleading. I've included their picture that they've given you of the view from our homes. And then, I've also, on the next page, included the view of a fifteen-foot stake from my property yard line. The property, this is given the fifteen feet as we did not know about the twenty-five or the additional ten-foot setback that was going to be offered by them today. At fifteen feet, you can see the stake in my yard, and if you haven't, I would strongly, strongly encourage you to come out and see it in person because it just, stake doesn't do it justice. I've also included a picture so you can see that the stake is essentially past that first row trees before the second row, children's play yards and everything. Again, just coming to a privacy component with regard to this being our backyards, not our side yards. I respect that this is their side yard lot, and so, they're bound by or governed by those requirements. These are our backyards. Typically, side yards are going to jut up against another side yard, and I don't need to play soccer in my side yard, so that's a different story. I also understand that side yards are but up next to backyards in a number of areas throughout town. I just don't know if there's another example where it's affecting twelve backyards in a row, if there's that many, and that's information I don't have. It's just a question that we would like to raise. The Esprit residents' individual rooms are going to be, are positioned at the fifteen-foot setback, so I think there are approximately three rooms specifically at that point. So, again, as far as privacy, not just our own, but theirs as well, we have concerns with regard to that kind of a boundary. The initial plan with the fifteen-foot and the Black Hill Spruce, the Black Hill Spruce was intended to be the buffer zone, but I have concern with the fact that a full mature Black Hill Spruce is approximately twenty-five feet wide. And so, if we in fact don't get an additional setback beyond the fifteen, and again, this was news that that was going to be an option for us, their initial plan called for ten feet of a Black Hill Spruce to be on our property. At some point, Black Hill Spruce grows, are slow-growing trees, and that's also another concern that this screening effect is going to take some time. And I respect the fact that mature trees aren't always the best option as far as being viable so that they don't die. I also respect the cost factor involved with that, but we just are very concerned about the boundary transition component of a facility of this size being positioned next to single-family homes. It's a twenty-four-hour facility, and that component is also concerning with regard to the land use in particular. Aside from the twelve current residential, or, excuse me, aside from the twelve residential backyards that are affected directly by the property line, we're also going to have people who are across the street, in particular by the parking lot area, that are going to deal with lighting and so forth. Because of the nature of the facility, they have to have external lighting around the entire perimeter of the building, so that too, we're concerned about spill-over lighting onto our backyards and so forth. Parking and the increased traffic is of high concern right now, and that's one of the other points that's made in the Sioux Falls Shape 2035, I believe it was, to prevent heavy through traffic on minor residential streets by requiring a system of collector's streets between adjacent subdivisions. The current plans right now show South Audi Avenue as the only access point for service, construction, employee, visitors, you name it. And this is presently a very quiet neighborhood largely because of the design. There are not very many through streets at all in this development, if you look at the plan there. So, now, all of a sudden, have this kind of traffic with an unknown date because it's outside of the builder's control, we understand, as far as when Eighty-First will connect with Minnesota. We don't know how many years we're talking as far as this kind of traffic coming in and out. We've been told that it's a locked facility in order to keep, provide safety for their residents. We have some concerns with regard to the potential noise that will be spilling over. Obviously, if a resident attempts to leave without permission, there's going to be alarms. I don't know that that's going to happen often. We don't know. We also don't know, it was brought up last night, that they're highly monitored, that if they are in their bathroom for too long, an alarm will sound. I don't know how loud of an alarm. I don't know where those are positioned, but again, those are just concerns of how much spill-over noise, how much spill-over lighting. The additional traffic is going to be now a part of a very close-knit, small, single-family residential unit. Essentially, we don't feel that a structure this size is compatible with the existing residential development. We're asking for a minimum of fifty-foot setback from all existing residential property, and really, that proximity is our largest point of contention. You can do some things with landscaping and with screening, but at the end of the day, this is a buffer zone that we feel is appropriate. We're asking for staggered Black Hill Spruce rather than a row of Black Hill Spruce as this will provide quicker privacy opportunities as far as not being able to see through them. We're also asking for additional Black Hill Spruce beyond the five at the closest points, up to seven or more, to buffer that area further. Possibility of considering what kind of windows are placed into this, whether or not tinted or soundproof could be installed, and if that would help the noise component with regard to the alarm system that they have. Again, monitoring the spill-over lighting and who would be responsible for ensuring that that is not detrimental to our neighborhood. Possibility of a fence just to ensure increased security. And then, also, another major concern was street access from Minnesota Avenue being completed at an earlier point rather than at a later point. It's my understanding that if Phase One is approved, Phase Two is automatically approved. Concern regarding that would be, this is a unique facility, which is part of the draw, I think, to the community and part of the reason that many of us view it as a wonderful thing to have in our community. But that being said, we haven't been able, we've, again, as neighbors, have tried to find similar situations with regard to nursing homes or facilities that have partial Alzheimer units, whatever, throughout the city, and certainly, we didn't get, you know, get to every block, I'm sure, but we haven't found any that are within that close of a proximity without a greater buffer zone. And so, we just have some concerns as to, we don't, we forecasted what we think are issues. We don't know what issues are actually going to be, and with Phase Two being approved right away, we're looking at, you know, a hundred and twelve residents within this facility, which we consider significant. We were caught very off-guard. I think I've communicated that. The neighborhood feels that notices posted on four corners of private land with no through street is not sufficient notice. In fact, the city addressed the fact in a public notification rezoning in the minutes that I found from January two thousand nine, and I think this was specifically related to the Sanford properties. But again, just drilling home the point that I don't think residents are being informed of changes that are happening and drastically affecting their properties. It's our understanding that Esprit is being presented as an assisted living facility, and we aren't arguing that it is considered residential in nature, but we strongly question just that language that's being used. Dementia, the Alzheimer's type, is identified listed in the Diagnostic Statistical Manual of Mental Health Disorders, published by the American Psychiatric Association. That was addressed by Janet earlier. Again, just wanting to ensure the safety of both their residents as well as ours, as well as our privacy. Past couple of weeks have been an education, needless to say. At this point, it's our understanding that a conditional use permit is needed for this facility to go forward, and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to present our perspectives to you. We feel that a facility of this size, scope and unique characteristics should be given significant attention before a decision is made because of its uniqueness. We don't know how this is going to impact us. Again, I would encourage you, if you haven't, if possible, to come out and stand on my deck to look at my backyard. I understand that the current plan is meeting codes, and I understand that they're following all the laws, and I'm just pleading to you to maybe ask to go above and beyond that. I'm a high school counselor. D is a passing grade. It's not what I tell my students to shoot for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Tanyel?
Well, very nice presentation. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Tanyel.
Yeah?
So, you do understand that this facility fits this zoning notice?
We understand that it fits the zoning notice, but that additional permit, special use permit, is needed, and there must be a reason for that.
No, it's a, this is the conditional use permit hearing.
Condition, excuse me, conditional use. Yes. But that's what I'm saying is that they can't just, if I, if I want, if it was zoned residential, and my understanding, and I could be wrong, is that if I wanted to, it's zoned residential, and I wanted to purchase that property and build a single-family home, I would not need to have a meeting like this.
I'm not sure you'd need it for apartments either, would you?
Well, I mean, in this district, there's a different district for apartment uses, but, I mean, like I said earlier, the reason it's a conditional use permit is because we consider it an allowed use, but that sometimes there's circumstances which need to be mitigated, and so, how do you address those issues? And that's the power of this body by the conditional use to say, what do we need to do to alleviate the concerns or to help address that?
Thank you, David.
David, this conditional use meeting tonight isn't final. I mean, whatever we recommend, is this a PD?
You, no.
The conditional use permit.
This is final action by planning commission.
But that needs to then be ratified or has to go to the city council.
It can be appealed. If there is, appeal it to the city council. But in general, conditional use permits are, is a final action with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question along those lines? Because we've read, again, in trying to educate ourselves, that forty percent of individuals who have property within two hundred and fifty feet can protest a decision. Is that accurate with regard to this particular situation or not? Because I think we can get near a hundred percent of the neighborhood with, that falls within two hundred and fifty feet to sign off.
Mr. Hublin can answer that question for you.
The standard that she just referenced was an appeal of a rezoning to a second city council hearing, and so, that's a different type of item. I mean, if the city council acts and then the residents want the zoning considered again, that's what that process is for. All they need is one or two neighbors to submit a letter to either the city clerk's office or to us, our office, to get it on the council agenda.
Okay.
Had we been at the February meeting and had had an opportunity to present our case at that point, is there the possibility that it wouldn't have been approved for this particular zoning?
I doubt it.
I would doubt it as well.
Yeah. I think that the request to be RS2 was appropriate at that time.
And single-family falls under that, so again, that was our understanding.
It's one of the uses, yeah. Any other questions for Tanyel? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If there's one other person that would like to come up, we'll...
I'd like to, but I just, with respect, I mean, if there's somebody else that's going to be on the opposing side, I'd like to give that opportunity versus all of us, and then maybe have a closing comments about the other side.
We're only going to hear one more person.
All right. I'm going to be redundant, I promise, too. My name is Rob Walter. I just moved here with my wife Patty. We actually signed our purchase agreement on January thirteenth of two thousand and ten, closing our property on March third. So, the zoning changed in the time in which we were in the process of transacting, and that's something we talked about with Alderman Jamerson. We're new to the area, so it's different terms from Minnesota and Wisconsin. But I would say that the issue that we have is threefold, and the first point that I'd like to make is that, you know, our notification, and in the middle of a transaction, had we known that, you know, this property was going to be what it is proposed as, we would have never bought our property. There's absolutely no way. If it's single-family homes, and I think a lot of residents and realtors suggested, you know, residential, and I think, you know, I step back and I say, you know, in layman's terms, you know, what is residential? You know, I can see, you know, single-family homes, assisted living facilities that, you know, truly are, you know, enter as you wish and leave as you wish. And when we, you know, bought our property, we did understand that that was a possibility. I would like to say that, you know, again, to reiterate the process, issues that we have. One thing that I would also like to note is, our property's at seventy-one sixteen South Wilshire Pine, we are actually one of the people that are closest to the jut. And I grew up on a farm, and, you know, my grandpa was a logger, and one pice is three feet. If you take five pices, that's fifteen feet, and so, twenty-five feet might be the corner of that, that post right there. So, twenty-five feet is for single-family homes in the back of your yard. What we're talking about is something that has four wings. Again, we don't know what the second stage looks like. Nobody's seen any pictures, but that's what we're approving today. And this is a huge complex, and all they're saying is we're going to be between here and that post from, you know, our yard. A single-family home, I guess, why would we not hold higher standards for extremely larger facilities? I think that that, to me, just seems like something that if, you know, possible, we should look to change, you know, the definition of how far is acceptable setbacks, and should we hold a single-family home to the same as a large institutional building? The one thing that I would also like to reiterate is, and respectfully disagree, that my grandfather was in an assisted living facility, and he could come and go as he pleased, and it was an apartment. It was, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not in the development business, but this is treatment. I mean, everything that's in the media and in the plans suggests that, I mean, there's going to be a bar in this facility. These people can't be, I mean, we heard that last night, and this, these people can't be without supervision in the bathroom if they're in too long, they're going to get an alarm sounded. That didn't happen in my grandpa's assisted living facility. So, we are in a little bit of gray space here on what's assisted living and what's an institution for treatment. And again, my grandfather, my grandmother both suffered from Alzheimer's, and one Alzheimer's, one dementia, so personal to me, and I understand the value of this sort of a concept. Our issues are about setback, but I think mostly it's about, is this as we would define residential under RS2? And, you know, the city can approve it as assisted living because that's what everybody says it is, but if you read, do some research on assisted living, there is a lot of different interpretations, and there's no scientific metric that says if this person has a significant amount of medical treatment, they are not assisted living, they're in a, you know, in fact, a mental health facility. So, that was one of our other issues. A couple of other issues is, who's going to regulate the spill-over? I mean, that is part of the city plan that is recommended, is there's going to be spill-over lighting from an institutional facility like this. In a year's time from now, is that, is there somebody that comes out and says, yeah, there's really no spill-over, it actually works? I mean, if it's a residential neighborhood, you're not going to have to deal with that.
Rob, I believe as a part of the plan check process, they have to submit the photometrics for all of the outside exterior fixtures, and that's checked during the plan check process?
Okay. So, I mean, I'm not, this is my first hearing like this, so this is just concerns we have.
That's the typical way of handling exterior lighting in parking lots and at the outside of a building.
Okay. So, I guess, you know, I don't want to take up too much more of your time, but, you know, this is a six to seven million dollar facility, and that's a significant investment. If it takes, you know, mature trees, I mean, again, you know, I grew up in the country, you know, I mean, it's not going to cost a million dollars to make a sufficient buffer that's above and beyond, and that's another thing we heard last night, is the developers suggested going above and beyond, and, you know, what you're doing for single-family homes, I don't think that's above and beyond for an institution of this size and appropriate screening with staggered trees, and we can definitely require, you know, the height to be more than six feet. I mean, again, I'd also invite you to come to look at our screen deck, and you would see it's going to be a wall that we're looking at. see, it's going to be a wall that we're looking at. So, we're kind of blindsided by this as well, and I'm sure I'm missing things, but I really think that we're in strong opposition to the whole thing. 50 feet would be, I mean, minimum, and again, that's just double from here to that corner. And that's, this is, if you could please pull up the design of the building again, and actually look at it. You can see on the east side of the property, it looks like there's plenty of room to go that way, too. And I, you know, there's more room between the driveway and the building than there is between our property and the edge of the building. So, to me, that doesn't seem, you know, like it's being very neighborly either. So, again, I would say it's not assisted living, you know, and I'd have a hard time believing that it's come-as-you-go assisted living as I know it, and I think there's a lot of discrepancy on that. And then, you know, it is a mental health facility, mental health treatment facility, and there's a lot of concerns that the neighbors have about that. But if there were, you know, setbacks of minimum 50 feet with significant, you know, buffer zones, you know, I could only see that as the only logical path forward. I mean, without that, I think that it is, it is, is our minds, you know, not residential.
Rob, I think you're covering a lot of the same ground that we've already covered.
Okay. That's pretty much all I have.
Any questions for Rob?
You know, Kenny, or Meredith, I would like to address the notification issue, and Tanya referred to the Sanford, what happened in the Sanford area. That was individual property owners whose property was being rezoned. It wasn't a portion of property that adjudited their property. Their property was being rezoned. So what she gave us is not apples-to-apples comparison to what you're talking about. So, though I can appreciate that you don't like or appreciate how the notification process works, certainly would encourage you then to get active, and if you want a different notification process, then work within the city to help us find something amenable to all of you. But they worked within the process that we have set up. Like it or not, they worked within the process and the boundaries of which we've asked them to do.
Yeah, I mean, and to my knowledge, you're referring to the process of the posting on the four sides, and, you know, again, there's only one point which none of us travel by that. You know, again, I mean, ignorance is bliss, but I bought my property on March 3rd.
Sure.
And you know what? Maybe there's a little special circumstance. Even Alderman Jamerson agreed that, that seems a little odd that you're in the middle of a transaction, you're just moving to town, and, you know, you bought a property without full knowledge of the zoning, you know, laws and changes. So, a little bit of buyer beware, and I realize that, but on the same token, I really think that, you know, the notification process, at least for me, actually, there's a sale pending with, that I believe is within 250 feet, and, you know, I wonder if they even know that there's going to be this kind of an institution going in. And again, I mean, these people have lived here in Sioux Falls or South Dakota for their whole lives. I just moved here, so.
Any other questions for Rob?
Thank you for your consideration.
At this time, we're going to close testimony.
I ask some information.
Is this, is this different?
Yeah.
And can you give it to us in five minutes or less? Why don't you come up? This is the last person to testify tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. My name's Mike Yonick, and I live at 801 West Glen Eagle. And the first thing I would like to address is the street that people will be driving out of, and if it's late and they miss it, how they land in my front yard. Here's a, can I approach you guys with some pictures?
They'll put it up.
Okay, fine. The first picture is of 49th, and I believe it's Terry. It's a T-intersection that's going to be very similar to what I'm going to be facing, other than they've moved it over so it'll, when a person misses that intersection, they'll go through my front yard and into my neighbors and my backyard, taking out our fence. This is the Terry T-intersection.
Would you show that other picture?
That's a view from where the proposed street is, and if you miss that intersection, what you're going to run into. And in the remedy for the Terry 49th Street intersection was a stoplight, apparently. It wasn't there when they originally did that, and now it's a stoplight. And this is clearly resident, that street has residential traffic on it. That's it. Now we're going to be looking at semi-trucks, we're going to be looking at ambulances, and to put, to add insult to injury, they put the cul-de-sac on the other end on their design, instead of linking up to Minnesota Avenue.
I think they intend at some point in time to have that connection to Minnesota.
And that makes it worse, because people will fly off Minnesota Avenue, get a great running start, and have one sign to see of a T-intersection that ends up right in somebody's area.
And we don't really get involved in traffic issues?
But the zoning discusses traffic impact and detrimental traffic impact.
We don't determine if somebody should install a stoplight.
Fair enough. The next picture I have is, goes to the rezoning of this, and it's proof that they don't post stuff, or if they do, you can't see it. The first picture is the, a picture of two wonderful labs that are mine. The bottom of it is a permanent metal stake, and you can see the amount of snow that's there, and the zoning notice that was there for the RS2 rezoning. It's just by luck that my wife took that picture. That picture is taken from an elevated position on our deck, or on our front porch. What it doesn't show is the six feet of snow between the sidewalk, which you'll see, and that post, or that zoning pick, okay? From your car, you couldn't see over that, because if you recall, in February, we had a fair amount of snow, and every inch of snow that we had got pushed up onto that boulevard and my boulevard. Here is the current picture of that area. The stake's still there, there are new zoning notice, and potentially, the zoning could have been on that short stick. We don't know. Either way...
The short stick is a survey.
The one right next to the metal post.
That's a survey marker.
Okay, survey, okay. So, I think odds are, it was on that tall one, and there was nothing there February 7th.
Anything else, Mike?
I think, I just appreciate that.
No, any questions for Mike? Okay, we're going to close testimony. At this point in time, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 10 of the conditional use permit in the RS2 to construct an assisted living facility, with the one recommendation, the land screening line along the west property will be installed and maintained per the submitted plans. I'd like to make an additional stipulation that the side yard setback on the west side of the property would have a 25-foot setback versus the 15-foot required setback.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that for purposes of discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Maybe this is for staff. Do we, do we know any idea when the road would come off of Minnesota to this property?
Well, it's, I mean, it's correct in the, that they say it was a developer responsibility to complete the road. My understanding is that it would be completed to Minnesota Avenue by December of 2011, although the applicant may need to correct that if they're aware. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say, David?
December of 2011 was what I heard, but, you know, I'm not completely sure about that.
We don't know that for sure, but that's what most recent information was.
Yep.
We were told that we were told about 2012.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Another question I got is, the second, I had heard from the opposition that the, there was no idea of what the second phase was going to be, but from what I've read and what I've understood, the second phase is going to be identical to the first stage?
What I said...
It's dotted in there.
Yeah, and what I indicated in my staff report is that this approval is for both phases, unless the portion of the second phase is significantly different or altered from the characteristics and design of what you're approving tonight.
Okay. And the 25-foot setback would go in.
Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Schmidt just added that as a second stipulation, so that's what you'll be voting on.
Question about parking?
Close.
We're past, Eric, I'm sorry, but we've closed audience participation, and we're taking action at this time. Any other discussion?
You know, I can appreciate the concern over uncertainty. I think anytime we don't know what is going to happen in our neighborhood, a certain level of uncertainty brings anxiety. It's unfortunate that we have a tendency to go to the lowest common denominator, and we see that often when people come to this body, that they don't want an assisted living facility, they don't want a daycare, they don't want a group home, all out of fear of what could happen in their neighborhood.
The building plan.
Let me talk. It's our time.
Let us talk.
You had your opportunity. I think we've taken testimony from you for almost an hour.
The leader shall talk.
It's my turn to talk.
Can we have a turn then?
You had ample time, so I'm going to finish my points here.
Disagree.
I think that as far as zoning ordinances and what the proper land use is, that this fits. It's an RS2 land use, it's a conditional use under RS2. There could be other things in this neighborhood, but they have designated an assisted living as what they want to build. There are a variety of levels of assisted living. I, too, am an owner of a project that has a variety of levels of assisted living, nowhere near here. So, but I knew, know the complications, and I know what goes in to provide a facility like that. It doesn't make me think one way or the other about what's going to happen here, because our goal is if this is the proper land use for this property and this facility and in this location. I believe that it is.
Thank you, Jesse, and I agree with you. I feel the same way.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion with the two stipulations signify by saying yes.
Yes.
opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Who's up next here? Is this Steve? Item 11?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item 11 is a final development plan submitted by the applicant, Ursula Fortney of Empire Building Construction. The owner of the property is Darren Fitz, Reading Bus Lines Incorporated. The request is for approval in order to construct a bus storage and shop building. General location is out on Potsdam Avenue in the Merlin Roy's Plan Development District, Subarea B. Existing land use is vacant. It's a small property, limited frontage. However, it is within the I-229 Design Review District and must meet those requirements in order to be approved by this body. The applicant has provided a plan that is compatible, as ranked as compatible with the adjacent land uses on all sides. The additional use regulations of the PD apply, including Design Review District, which calls for screening of the building unless it provides architectural materials of a certain type, and also has to screen the parking from view to Interstate 229. In lieu of providing the required architectural materials on the building, they are allowed to provide landscape berm and trees, conifers, sufficient to screen view to the interstate. And the applicant has provided a revised plan, which is included in the addendum to your information this evening, showing such berms and landscaping. Lighting is indicated as wall-mounted lights on the outside of the building elevations. A trash enclosure of 10-by-20 chain-link fence is indicated at the northeast corner of the building. Public sidewalk will be required along North Potsdam Avenue, that's in the engineering standard comments, and a building sprinkler fire system is also required. Because the plan that has been submitted, the revised plan submitted, meets the requirements of the I-229 Design Review District, you do not have to approve that this evening. However, we would like to get the planning director to sign off on that plan, so that they can get their building permit as soon as possible. So, the staff is recommending approval with one stipulation, one condition pursuant to I-229 Design Review Standards for building construction and screening. They are to provide a front yard landscape screening plan for review and approval by the planning director prior to the building permit. And that concludes staff report. We've had no calls.
Any questions for Steve? Well, that was easy. Thanks, Steve. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Hi, I'm Ursula Fortney. I live at 46230 262nd Street, Hartford.
Anything to add, Ursula?
The building is basically similar to the adjacent buildings. It is not a mechanic shop that they'll bring the buses in and clean them up and use it just to, mostly to, I guess for that reason, they'll wash them and clean up the inside, and then they'll go back out on the routes. And it's a pretty simple facility. The building to the south is screened similar to ours, and not the next building, but the next building to the north is done the same way with mature conifers, and we were going to do it the same way, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ursula? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address this issue? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item 11 with the one recommendation?
One stipulation.
One stipulation.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item 12. Is that you, David?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, excuse me, so...
We have a commissioner stepping down.
Yeah, would the chair note that for the record?
We'll do that. Staff report?
The request before you tonight is final development plan in Subarea D of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to allow construction of residential storage units. The applicant is Damian Grable with Urhart, Griffin, and Associates, and the owner is Ken Dunlap of Westwood Valley LLC. The general location of the site is the Laverne Whip Street and T. Ellis Road on the west edge of Sioux Falls. The area in question is 2.79 acres, and the abutting zoning and land uses include, to the north, Subarea D of the Westwood Valley PD, which is developing as multifamily, and we've given that a compatibility rating of 3. To the south is also Subarea D of Westwood Valley, which is developing multifamily, also warranting a compatibility rating of 3. To the east is Subarea A of Roosevelt Park, which is vacant at the moment, but is zoned for multifamily and office uses, which is warranting a compatibility of 3 as well. And to the west is Subarea A of Westwood Valley, which is developing as single-family uses, and that also warrants a compatibility rating of 3. As we've talked about on several different occasions tonight, that rating of 3 indicates a potential incompatibility, and the proposed use may have potential conflicts with existing adjacent uses, which may be remedied or minimized through project design. Getting into the history of where, of how we came to this point, the Westwood Valley Plan Development District was created by city council action in December of 2003. Final development plan has since been approved for multifamily residential projects and a fitness center. In February of 2010, the planning commission approved a major amendment to allow residential storage as an allowed use and add regulations that would govern the requirements for their design, compatibility, and construction. The city council approved, the planning commission approved it in February, and the city council subsequently approved it in March. The applicants have amended the subarea regulations to include residential storage as an allowed use and add regulations governing such use. Those... Those regulations are referenced at the end of your staff report. Currently, in addition to residential storage, the subarea allows permitted, permitted special and conditional uses from the RA1 Residential District and the O Office District, along with a provision for the existing cellphone, or cell tower that's, that's on site. A more specific location is West 32nd Street and Mary Beth Avenue, and the existing corridor development pattern along T.L.S. Road will eventually be upgraded to a limited access arterial. The setbacks required are in accordance with Subarea D regulations of the Westwood Valley PD, which require 10-foot side yards, 20-foot front and rear yards, although along T.L.S. Road, a 30-foot front yard setback is required. The applicant does conform to those requirements. The buildings in conformance with the subarea regulations, as they were approved a couple months ago, will be designed to appear as garage-style buildings, similar in nature to garage buildings located in apartment complexes. Horizontal siding and an asphalt shingle roof at a 4 to 12 pitch will be utilized to further enhance the residential characteristics of the design. The landscaping plan provided indicates the deciduous trees along the east and west property line and coniferous trees along the north property line adjacent to the residential uses. A specific delineation of tree species was not provided, however, we are recommending that no ash trees be used to meet minimum landscaping requirements. The applicant has also indicated that a wrought iron fence will be provided along the west and east property lines, and will be used in between the, and will also be used in between the individual storage units. The applicants have held, to staff's understanding, the applicants have held several meetings with the neighborhood, and they can report on that upon conclusion of this staff report. They've also held several meetings throughout the major amendment and final development plan process with planning, police, and fire staff to discuss any mitigation, security, and safety issues that would need to be addressed. The applicants have provided enhanced landscaping to mitigate any compatibility issues, and have provided a wrought iron fence to ensure access will come through the main entrance of, of the site off of South Mary Beth Avenue. The staff has found the proposed use to be unique and well-suited to the subject property, given the site constraints imposed by the existing telecommunications tower. The applicants have worked to mitigate compatibility issues and enhance site security, and have involved the neighborhood throughout the process. So, as with the major amendment, as I just noted, the applicant should be prepared to discuss the neighborhood meeting and response in greater detail. As of the drafting of this report, our office has received no phone calls, letters, or other communication from neighboring residents, and we haven't since the drafting of the report either. And so, staff's recommendation is because the subject application addresses potential incompatibilities and provide a neighborhood service, staff is recommending approval of the final development plan, is what that should say, with one condition, that would be that no ash trees would be allowed to use, to be used for, to meet minimum landscaping requirements. There's a typo at the end of the report. Sorry about that. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for David? Thank you, David. Is the petitioner here this evening?
Good evening. My name's Damian Grable. I'm with Earhart Griffin and Associates, 300 North Dakota Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 57104, here on behalf of the owner, Mr. Dunlap, for this project. I'll start with our posting and neighborhood meetings. We had a neighborhood meeting on April 21st of this year. We sent letters out about a week prior to that meeting. At that meeting, there were only three people there, two people, myself, another person from our office, and one gentleman that was very excited for the project, and that was Mr. Dunlap. Since then, after that meeting, we did post the property with the signs provided by staff. We've received one phone call on this project. That was from Mr. Kerry Shaw, and I believe he is with Development Group to the north of this, TE26 LLC. He just had some basic questions about the units, the screening. We did provide him or email to him building elevations and a copy of the final development plan. He stated to us that he thought it was a good use for this property, and at that time he did not have any objections to the use or the final development plan, and we have not heard from him again. As Mr. Loveland had stated, that we have worked very diligently with city staff, with police, on this final development plan. Just to point out a few of the items that we have worked with, the police department is, you can see that the entire development will be gated in or enclosed, and we have provided a wrought iron fence around the perimeter of this development. That's one thing we worked out with the police department. Also, the other item that they had brought up is, inside these storage units is, we won't provide electrical outlets within the units, so the only electricity would be for a light switch and a light. There will, there will be no other electric hookups in, inside the units, and that was something that the police suggested to us, and that's something that we have incorporated into our, our plan as well. We, we, other than that, I, I don't have any other further comments. The one condition on city staff's report, we're okay with that, we approve of that. There is a typo in there, we are here for a final development plan, and we would appreciate your vote of approval.
Thank you, Damian. Any questions for Damian?
Just one. Damian, would this driveway go between two residential dwellings, one on either side of the-
Well, you, and it would. You know, the lot has to have street frontage, and it has street frontage there, and, and also on T.L.S. Road. You know, again, things are changing.
How are you going to get access on the T.L.S. Avenue?
We will not, no.
You won't ever have access-
No, we won't have access on the T.L.S., so.
Okay.
We'll have access there, and then possibly again to the south.
I think it would make sense to make that a one-way.
I think, right.
You can never get out. Any other questions for Damian? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this issue or this Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item number 12.
With the-
One stipulation.
The ash trees.
Yes.
No ash trees.
No ash trees?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. I can't, I can't vote, Kenny. All right, item number 13. Is that you again, David? Oh, Steve, okay.
Item 13 is a final, again, another final development plan. It's located in the former Sioux Land Amateur Boxing Incorporated building, located, located at 1829 East 34th Street North. It's a one-acre site. Was recently rezoned to Subarea A of 34th Street North Plan Development District, and it has a compatibility rating of five to the north against I-1 light industrial uses, and three against the other three directions, south, east, and west, where there are residential, existing residential properties. Again, a potential incompatibility, and that is the reason why the Plan Development District requires a final development plan for any change in use, so that you have an opportunity to take a look at that proposed use and see if there are any special conditions under which it could be allowed. The proposed use is strictly warehouse, it isn't a, it is a permitted use in this subarea of the Plan Development District, and there are no changes being proposed to the outside of the building or to the site. Existing parking lot will be used, the entrances to the building, and there will be no vehicles stored on the property overnight. It will be used strictly for furniture warehousing, there will be no retail outlet. We've had no calls from adjacent property owners, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Is the petitioner here tonight?
Good evening. I am Stephanie Hayden. I am the Director of the Furniture Mission of South Dakota, which is located at 209 North Nesmith, here in Sioux Falls.
Do you have anything to add, Stephanie?
And we have nothing to add.
So, you'll rotate your furniture from the warehouse out to your Nesmith?
Our overflow.
Okay.
Just because our facility downtown, we feel we need to be down there, but it's just overflowed.
It's a good problem to have.
Any other questions for Stephanie? I guess not. Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to address this item? Come forward, please.
I hope this goes quick, because I got to get to the potty, sorry. My name's Martin Weber. I live at 1815 East 34th Street North. My main objection to this is that the neighborhood we live in is mostly residential. I know there's, I've lived in the area for 25 years after Norton Acres was annexed to the city, but to the north of 34th Street North is an industrial area, there's a tire place, culverts, and off to the, your right up the top is already warehouses, and I don't like a warehouse coming into a residential area. Should stay out. It degrades the property. I would love to have a buffer, like a sister living center between me and that, or any place. You wouldn't find me objecting at all. But I don't, I think it degrades the residential area, it makes it a warehouse, and the warehouses are in the industrial part. We're bringing something, I mean, admittedly, just for furniture maybe, but who knows what happens in the future. The warehouse could turn into any warehouse, they could sell it 10 years from now, it could go, be a Nordic, I might like it, or it could go to some other use. I just think a warehouse should stay in the warehouse section across the road. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mark?
The cat's kind of under the bag, the building's there.
Yes, but it could go to something other than a warehouse. I mean, it could rezone it to residential. I just, I understand that, and that's the problem with Norton Acres, as you know, when I first moved up there, it was gravel streets, but a lot of improvement had been made, you know, there's been, with the Habitat for Humanities, just right off to the, the right of them down Jessica there, there's been 20-some new houses just in that area alone. There's been at least another 10 new houses built in the neighborhood since I moved there. This is not, this is going in the opposite direction. It's my, that's my concern. You're putting a warehouse in a residential area which is trying to improve, this is not going to be an improvement to the residential neighborhood. That's the problem.
It was an athletic-
Boxing club, yeah, and it's kind of a, I think they sold it originally, the neighbors were telling to me, as a community development center.
What, what, what could we do to have you feel comfortable with this?
Uh, I think it could, to me, I, it's just, there could be a use permit, that Furniture Mission, when they could not sell it to somebody, to like a warehouse, I mean, let's say 10 years from, who knows the future, 10 years from now, they outgrow it, or they get another warehouse that's bigger, and they go, well, what do we do with this place up in Norton Acres? You could sell it to somebody else for a warehouse.
The Mission Warehouse, you don't have difficulty with them using it?
If it were to stay that, correct. No, I, my church supports Mission Warehouse, I work at the Holiday Inn Downtown, we donate all of our beds there, we've donated some of our furniture to them. I've got no problem with that, the problem is like, five, 10 years. Once you make it, you know, you look along Benson Road or Minnesota 41st, the businesses and commercial areas always invade the residential, there's no houses going north or going, so once that happens, once you allow a commercial use to come into a residential area, it generally, it gets more and more, it gets aggressive, it expands, it never gets less. So, my problem is, five, 10 years from now, you know, who knows what, it can be sold as a warehouse.
So, what you're saying is, in five, 10 years, if they were to say, hey, we don't want to do this anymore, let's sell it, that to be used as a warehouse, you'd want them to have to come back.
Kenny, I think Steve can address this for us.
Yeah, I think he can, too.
Thank you. When this property was rezoned, and it's been rezoned to allow the following uses, either residential, church, wholesale trade, wholesale, trade, or office uses, including warehouse. It says that anytime you change that use, it has to come back to you for approval. So, Furniture Warehouse could not sell it to somebody else to use for something else.
Be used as a warehouse, Steve?
Can be used as a warehouse. You could stipulate for, on your approval, that it be limited to this applicant only, if you wish.
But it's already zoned for that. I mean, this isn't a rezone. This is just a final development-
It's not a rezone, it's a final development plan, and you can tie the final development plan to this applicant only, if you wish.
That would be a relatively easy stipulation. Any more questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Anyone else in the audience tonight that would like to address this issue?
Scott Van Ginkel, 5000 South Minnesota. I'm assisting Furniture Mission with, you know, purchasing the building and things of that nature. We did go around and talk to 50 of the residents within the neighborhood, had an extremely favorable response. In fact, they're excited to see Furniture Mission come in. I think you're going to see that property probably get cleaned up, be better maintained. It's going to eliminate some road parking and, you know, driving through the parking lot, things of that nature.
Any questions for Scott?
Did you understand what Mark would like us to do, as far as put a stipulation on there that it's be used as a warehouse for you guys, for, for you guys only at this particular point in time?
Yes, and I think, Steve can correct me if I'm wrong or not, but in the plan development, you know, anytime you're going to have that change of that use, even if it is tied simply to the Furniture Mission, you know, someone, you know, a future owner's going to have to come before you and, you know, explain to you again what your plan, what their plan is.
So, you understand that?
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Scott? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address this item? Okay. I would entertain a motion for action on item 13.
I'll move for approval of item 13 with one stipulation, that it be for this applicant only.
Okay.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You know, this is a tricky piece of property. It has been before us several times in the recent months, and I, I don't know what you do with it, because you couldn't put in an apartment building because there's no access, you couldn't get any emergency vehicles in there. I, I, I hope it'll serve Furniture Mission's needs very well, and we don't hear about it for another 20 years. I'll be long gone by then.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 13 is approved. Item 14 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Somewhat.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.